Have our joint public hearing tonight for July 26th, it's four o'clock. I'll go ahead and do a roll call of planning commission members first, Howard Tritt. Okay, Abby Dahlman.
Here.
Bryce Erlich, I know he was just having audio issues. I think he's here, he's just resigning in. Erin Palin.
Here.
And Lupe Bobedia.
Here.
Great, and county commissioners, Commissioner Munch.
Here.
Commissioner Marcela.
Here.
And Commissioner Feeler.
Here.
Great. And staff, do we have any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Well Heather, I don't think that we have any, any changes this evening.
Okay. With that, we move down to those minutes, and I was just gonna open up Paul's email, because I think there's only a few of us that can vote on the separate minutes here.
Heather, I'm here, Tritt is here.
Howard Tritt, yay, welcome.
Yeah, yay. July 12th, we weren't able to, to approve those, because I think it was you and Howard and.
I was there.
And Erin.
Yeah, 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 okay, so we have both, we have minutes from July 2nd, of which Howard, Erin, and I are able to approve, so if either of them have a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve those minutes.
Second that motion.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the minutes from July 12th. Sounds like Howard, Heather, Abby, and Lupe.
I'll motion to approve minutes from July 12th.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, great. We are gonna move down to items of new business, the first one we have on there is file 21-12 and 21-13, the Tabor Star's major subdivision sketch plan and PUD. And we have a request to table this due to the infrastructure development. Is there a date of which they're wanting us to try to table that to?
The applicant has asked for August 9th. He does believe that he's gonna come in with a phased development plan, and that he will have enough time to bring that to us this week, and then he would like to have this extended until August 9th.
Okay, and we don't have any conflicts on our current schedule for that?
I believe the other file is also going to be asking to be tabled for that date too. But I think that we went into this believing that we would have the bandwidth to be able to do both of these files in the same hearing.
Okay. I guess, do we have a motion to table file 21-12 and 21-13 to August 9th?
Yeah, I will make the motion to postpone file 21-12 and 21-13 Tabor Star until August 9th.
Great, second. Any discussion on that? Okay, I'll do, all in favor of that?
Aye.
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 Do we have any opposed? Okay, great, motion carries. File 21-15 is the Murphy Rezone, also requesting to table to satisfy some notice requirements to August 9th.
Yeah, I, I think that all of you have the staff report that was done for that. Can I get some, would he nod their head? Okay.
Yeah, but.
Okay. That's a staff failure. We just didn't get the notice of adjacent property owners notified, or the signage posted out on the site. Staff did that ourselves, we didn't ask for the applicant to do that, because it was a staff failing. So we're looking to request tabling until August 9th.
Do I have a motion as such?
Yep, I'll move to here, file 21-15, the Murphy Rezone on August 9th.
Great, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, great. Move down to old business. Item A is the backcountry zone creation, and getting an update and talking about schedule, and I'll let Ann lead us off on that.
Thanks Heather. So, as we all know, we get really excited prior to the first few meetings in the summer months, and then we become a little overwhelmed. And so, there hasn't been any real movement on moving forward with the zone creation. Our outstanding pieces, of course, are preparing all of the information that we're going to provide through our website, and we're gonna collaborate with the newspaper in putting out an informational article, and just making sure that as we do this very large zone change proposal and hearing, that we have prepared the public as robustly as possible. And so, we still have that part of the lift to do. There are also remaining a few, the code draft is almost complete. There's only a couple interactive parts as far as camping. That portion of the code needs to be fine tuned. There's also a couple outstanding areas of the building code that we also have to get online. So, our next steps and our action steps are pretty much the same as the workflow when we last shared that. We have a little on staff side to fine tune within the mechanics of the code and the mechanics of the building code, the land development code and the building code. Then, the same group to continue to work on the marketing piece, or the informational, public information piece, that we wanna feel very confident about. The other item that we have added to kind of our action steps are a town hall to engage with the public and have just an information sharing opportunity for all affected property owners, as well as anyone else that would want to gain more information in preparation for the actual public hearing. And then I think that our goal had been, the last meeting, regular meeting in August, I would propose that if we are able to have all of this accomplished by the end of the year with introduction of the new code starting in 2022, I think that might be a more realistic goal for us. I know that we all would not want to push it any further back than we have to, but just knowing the workload that's in front of us, and the remaining files that are coming forward, I think it's also probably a good time to share with everyone that we've also heard from Gateway, and they believe they're gonna be coming in to us with a sketch plan to still be heard in the next few months, probably. So we have Tabor's Star coming at us, we have the issues that are remaining with Angel View that we're looking to work through. And we have several CUPs that are in the wings that are going to be coming forward, they're going to have a lot of moving parts to them. And so just anticipating the workload that's coming forward, I would hate to be overly ambitious in thinking that we can get this certainly done by the end of August. I also think that there are some other, you know, we've talked about wanting to set a second or a third meeting a month for a work session to look at common goals between the board and the planning commission, as well as the comp plan, strategic planning that we've talked about. So I think we have a lot on our plates, and so I would just suggest to everyone that I think a really realistic goal is if we are able to bring the code online by the first part of, or by January 1, hopefully bringing it either somewhere in October, November, December timeframe to final hearing, and then so that we can roll this out for the next building season. I think that might be a real realistic goal for, for us, although I'm certainly open to everyone's thoughts and suggestions.
I think that makes sense, Commissioner Marcela, I see your hand is raised.
I just had a quick question. We learned about some updates to and amendments to the onsite wastewater treatment regulations, would that have any effect on the backcountry zone creation or any impact on that at all? Or would you, would you anticipate anything there?
I guess Kayla, can you elaborate on that a little bit? Are they, are they changes? Oh, Paul, you can?
Yeah, I went to the Board of Health meeting last week, and there was an attempt by the Environmental Health Department to see if the Board of Health would be willing to approve an amendment to the, to the health code that allows for staff to be able to make these decisions of whether a vault privy or a pit privy are acceptable generally in the backcountry. But for the most part, right now, they have to go to the Board of Health, and the suggestion was by staff, by the environmental health staff, that it be a staff review item. Jackie Littlepage did confer with CDPE, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, as to whether that would be acceptable to them, and they said yes, it would be. So, I think that there's another meeting coming up with the Board of Health in order to be able to readdress this issue. And with the Board of Health, in order to be able to make that a staff decision, administrative decision, rather than a hearing before the Board of Health. So I think that that also makes, makes the procedure for a backcountry hut easier.
Right, it, it sounds like it would actually aid the code change, and you know, I think kind of address one of the outstanding concerns, you know, that we identified early on and, and kind of continued to have about the variance process not, and, and that administrative process not being available. So actually, it sounds like it might really kind of aid this creation and align nicely with our work.
I agree, that's what it sounds like, that sounds like good news.
Does that answer it for you, Kayla?
Yeah, that answers my question, Paul, I think we just wanna make sure that there's some connection between the process and building and land use and the process and environmental health with, with any code change that may be adopted or approved.
Sure, that, that procedure is in place even as we speak.
Yeah, I think, I, I wonder if, I think along the lines of Kayla's statement, it would be nice to then know, you know, that there are some goals and objectives between land use and the BOCC and the BOH for staff to then follow a certain criteria.
Sarah, I think that this, this code amendment, I, you know, I guess I have to find out from environmental health, whether the board is involved with that or not. I think it's just the Board of, Board of Health. But do you know, Sarah, does, does the Board of County Commissioners actually have anything to do with health code?
Well, if the Board of County Commissioners sits as the Board of Health, yes, and also the Board of Health can take, I think that's kind of this ongoing conversation about Board of Health decisions on regulations that affect land use and not conflicting with decisions that are made by the BOCC and recommended by the Planning Commission. But I'm, I'm, you know, I was not present and did not, I don't have information to understand what criteria, you know, staff would be running off of to, to approve or disprove, so. It would be nice if that is, is, you know, you know, what, what, what scenarios would this not provide efficiency? Or, you know, what are the mechanisms to then go to the board, perhaps if somebody wanted to object to any kind of administrative decision or request that? I, I don't know if those are already outlined or not.
I, I think that this is along the lines of what Kayla and I talked about last week, of the Environmental Health Department actually preparing its staff report, which has not been done. Would you agree with that, Kayla?
Yeah, I think so, and I think kind of what Sarah's asking is what would be the correct lane if you were denied a pit privy, a vault toilet through an administrative process, then what would be your next, your next step or your next recourse, and how would that relate to backcountry zoning, right Sarah?
I think that's an excellent point, and it would probably result in a hearing before the Board of Health.
Right, most, most administrative processes always have a hearing appeal process, so that it can go to a higher decision. And I'm, I would sure, I would imagine they would build something like that in there. And in, on the, on the land use and building department side of, of this new co-creation, it would be, you know, it aligns already with a process that we have through any building permits that public health signs off on. So I think that, I think the two, I think this adds another level of efficiency if it comes to fruition. And, and so I think, and, and currently aligned with the process that we do for all building permits. So I think this will just add in efficiency and is, and as long as there is that appeal process, but I would imagine, just like with any administrative decision, there's always that ability to, to take it to a higher decision.
And, and I'll just chime in, I mean, from the Board of Health meeting, I think these are some of the questions that we wanted to have a little bit, or I wanted a little bit more chance to even think about the questions, and this, even just this like five minutes has been really helpful for me. But I think, to me, understanding what, you know, what are the criteria, or like what, you know, if, if, if the authority is devolved to the staff level in environmental health, like with what criteria applied, and then yeah, this appeals section, there's some other questions about like, is that, you know, is there any public comment aspect of a staff decision? So again, thanks, this has been helpful for me, just to formulate some of those questions to take back, I think to the Board of Health, this next discussion. And staff there. That was it.
Any other thoughts on backcountry zone creation, does, does it kind of, you know, Ann and I talked about it a little earlier too, and as much as we all want five more hours every day or more, just can't put it together to get all of this stuff put together the right way to get it sent out, and I think that's what we all wanna strive for, so. Does that new timeline sit well with, with everybody here tonight?
Yeah, I just had a question, we were planning on like a 90-day public review period, correct?
As far as like posting and then hearing day, yeah, I think so.
So January 1st, so we'd be looking, yeah, I mean, if we have this information by the end of August, is that what you're saying is not realistic, or is that what we should be aiming for, is having the information ready by the end of August, so that we can be on that 90-day notice timeline?
End of August would still, you know, put us having this in November or December. So yeah, I think that's a realistic goal of by the end of August, that give us basically a month to work on the two outstanding items of just having the informational piece ready for distribution, identifying the radius, which Bryce, I know you've done a great job of, but just checking for any de-transfers, and so if we have any new owners in those certification areas. And then the fine tuning elements that staff still has, so that gives us 30 days, that still puts us on target for a launch of the new code, if it's successful prior to the next year's building season. Oh gosh, and I was just thinking that, oh, there's one piece that I think that perhaps you all had a discussion about, and I missed. And that was the mailing component. Jeff, you had suggested that through maybe an effort at the school, you had engaged with a mailing company to help with the facilitation of actually doing these mailings, and then I, I saw that it was reported back to me that maybe we found a reason that that might not work. And I was just wondering if, if there had been further discussion about that, enlisting the help of a third party to actually help facilitate the mailing portion.
Sorry, I have to admit, I was multitasking for a second there. What, what, what's the volume of the mailing that we're talking about?
Bryce, do you have a, a number, we're in the thousands?
Yeah, off the top of my head, oh my gosh, I'm getting confused with industrial mining, but I believe it's like 1,200.
Right, yeah, I mean, I think that, 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 that volume's high enough, so, so, so there, I have at least two or three mailhouse references, and I couldn't dig out the one we used for the foray campaign. And the school might use their own, not sure how the school district does it. But yeah, there, I mean, this is their job, and they're just like amazingly efficient and professional at it. You give them like any kind of spreadsheet, it has to be digital, you can't give them like a, you know, PDF version of it, but any digital version of the address files and what you want in the envelope and the size of it, and they will make it happen really fast.
The treasures office also uses a company, Ann?
Okay.
I can forward you their contact as well.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Jeff. I, I just thought that we could explore that and have that information to bring forward for a decision on, you know, if that is a, a good way to be efficient in this mailing and notification. We also have already had a conversation with a newspaper who was very excited to partner with us on a timely news article when we are ready, so that was a conversation that staff has already had in just setting up next steps. So, I think if we had a target of the end of August, Paul and I will work on the last remaining items on the fine tuning of the code and building code. And we can reach out to the group that has volunteered to work on the informational piece. And now we're hoping that as John has joined our courses, I think that we're going to see if he will help us with our web presence. And although he doesn't know that yet, he's sitting in the room with me. But I think that he, that's a talent that I think that he can bring and help current staff with. So really making sure that we get that messaging out there, and then by the end of August, knowing when we wanna advertise for a town hall, and just really make sure that we've done the best messaging and information out to the community that, that we possibly can. And certainly any other ideas at the Board House or the Planning Commission for staff in kind of achieving that goal, welcome any kind of suggestion.
I think the mailing piece is a big one in that we'll probably wanna have that, whichever company we wanna use, if we can use a company kind of decided upon, so that if we, because we wanna use this for noticing, and we would wanna try to send that notice out by the end of the month, slash beginning of September at the latest, so it seems like, you know, having that piece in place is good, and, you know, I think that fingers crossed, it won't take too long for Erin and I to get together on putting together some marketing pieces that we may just shoot over to staff to send out in between meetings for feedback as well, and yeah, if we can come back together by the end of the month with, you know, with a good, good put together package, and even if I guess my thoughts, my initial thoughts are, if, if the posting is what we need to have done by the end of the month, some of the finer details that you're still working out with code, I don't know, I mean, not to put that off, but I don't know that the requirement for that to be done by the end of August is as dire as us just making sure that whatever needs to go in that mailer is put together by the end of August, and then we have a really strict timeline after that, but that way the mailing and the posting get done at the end of August, and then we'll be on that track for a December hearing.
Heather, do you mean mailing and posting, do you mean mailing and advertising in the paper? Because.
Sure. I'm thinking noticing, I guess, is what I'm talking about, noticing, noticing and posting, and so since we're, I think our thought was that in the notice, the public notice, notices that get sent out is where we're gonna include the information about what we're trying to do and why we're doing it, so the marketing piece.
I would suggest that the way we do that is actually put a language in the map on the website.
Right, right, I think that's the plan.
Yeah, include a link in the notice to how to get to that.
Yeah.
So I've got a couple of questions or concerns. I, I think the end of August might be a bit aggressive, at least for staff. John's first day is today, and it's gonna be another six, eight weeks before he's productive, before we can get him up to speed and actually be of help to me and Ann, Ann Marlon. And then the other question that I have is, once we mail out these notices, there's a good possibility that the property ownership will change in that next 90 days. And I don't know how to keep track of that, or if we do notice, if we are able to keep track of that, can we just send them individually, a separate notice? I guess Bryce, that might be a question for you.
Well, and I think that we can also ask Patty to give us de-transfers in that interim time so that we can identify a change of ownership. I, I know she tracks de-transfers and gives them to other individuals, so that might help, that's just a thought to kind of help with that, that time in there, so just, just a thought on that.
Well, and the same can kind of happen with any of our hearings, right, if some, if a property owner changes, but I will say, I mean, not that everybody follows it, but it's a, it's a big disclosure item, if a seller doesn't tell a buyer that he's received a notice and doesn't give it to the future owner, that's a pretty big issue. I don't know what our requirements are, I don't know that piece of, of our code, as far as if we've noticed everybody at public notice time, do we currently go after and keep track of if any of those property owners changed between then and closing?
No, because we usually only have about 30 to 45 days before we go to a hearing.
But I mean.
And now we're talking three months before.
I guess I'm just saying, it's not that big of a difference, really.
So code, code says that we've made a reasonable effort, that's, that's the qualifier within the code. Because sometimes we get those notices returned, and we have the applicants, if that happens, we have them, bring them to us, we put them in the file so that we have record that reasonable effort was asserted, and that sometimes those happen, so we keep record of any, any items that were returned. We do ask them to seek a forwarding address or, or a new ownership information. If, you know, if it's just a bad mailing address, but we, we do ask them to make a bit of an effort, if they're unable to find anything, then we note it and put it in the file. So we, we have had to look at this previously. So we, we have had to look at this previously as what is, what does code say about this? And, and that is the exact language, a reasonable effort.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with the idea of just having, of having Patty send de, de-transfers and we can just send out new notices. And I feel like that's making our reasonable effort. I'm not sure going beyond that. I think that it's more of a, a plus that we're giving the 90 days than a negative. So I don't, you know, I personally don't necessarily want to shorten that time period.
I think there's only going to be a handful of transfers in this particular zone in the fall too. So we should be able to catch them individually. But I was going to say, just for me, I wanted to do an August 1st data poll, just to kind of have a date. And then if you want, I can do it September 1st and then October 1st or whatever, if we wanted to capture all that or the differences between them. Cause I know it's a little bit different than the regular 30 day notice. So we could catch a couple cycles of that. But that would be my solution. I'm going to pull up the date on August 1st that I'm going to be giving you guys, just so we can kind of keep, have a timeline of when the data is changing.
Yep, agreed. So
According to my original point though, I really think that we're really talking, well, today's the 26th. So we're really only talking a month plus. And I, based upon what I know staff is dealing with right now, I think that might be a bit aggressive. I'd be more comfortable with six weeks or even eight, end of September.
Can we do eight weeks and then a 60 day notice?
No, I'm, I'm, no, I'm thinking more like eight weeks to get the stuff that Ann and Erin and Heather and I were supposed to do, because we talked about this months ago and talked about it being done by now. And it just hasn't happened. So I am concerned that we have, that that just might be too an aggressive clocking. So I'm still thinking end of September, that gives us November, December, and then maybe January. So maybe it doesn't happen on January 1st, maybe it happens January 31st.
Or we can, you know, reduce the notice to 60 days, which is twice the length it usually is.
Yes.
Will allow us to get it done by the end of this year.
Yes, that's actually a good point.
I would just suggest that whatever we do, we, we don't look to try to do it on December 27th. That would be the second meeting in December. It's always a really hard time to get everyone together due to holidays and such. So I would just be mindful that we either be looking at December 13th, if we're looking at December. And if we're looking at January, our dates would be January 10th or January 24th for regular meetings.
Well, and I mean, I guess to be, to put it out there, it's not like we have a bunch of these properties doing a whole lot in the winter anyway. That's kind of the point, right? They're very seasonal. So I guess I wouldn't have, you know, other than just wanting to clear this one off our plate so that we can address some other things. You know, I don't necessarily have opposition to a January approval time period with January 31st, you know, start date for the district. Yeah. And maybe, I know that Ann, you did a great job on that workflow and maybe you and I can, can chat about what, what are those items on there has to be done for the notice part? And then what needs to be done before the hearing? Because if you're talking about 90 days to work up the information that you need to for the code, for the hearing, you're talking about now, you know, 120 days to get that done. So we're not asking for that information to necessarily be totally ironed out to, to I's dotted and T's crossed. It's the piece that gets sent out to, for public notice that we need to have ready and whether that takes 30 days or 60 days or longer, I guess. And so I, without seeing that workflow in front of me, I can't really remember what all in there would need to be done before the, for the, for the actual, the, the noticing.
So I would suggest that I, I go ahead and just with kind of these new ideas that I just go in and send everyone an amended workflow to planning commission and the board to take a look at. So we get used, I'm very visual, I hope maybe some of you are, so that we can just kind of look at all of the next steps. Also kind of where we thought we could plug in a town hall meeting ahead of the actual hearing. So I would love to send out kind of an amended workflow with the idea of a target of, of having this final hearing on it sometime in January.
Sounds good to me. Anybody else have any comments? All right.
The only, the only reason, the only reason that I'm expressing my concern for this end of August timeframe is that we all really, we, we knew this list of things that needed to be done. And we thought we were going to get it done before the end of this first quarter. And it hasn't even happened by the end of the second quarter. So I am, and, and that kind of means that Ann is going to have to sort of redirect herself to other things for a period of time. And that means that Erin and you, Heather, are going to need to be proactive about getting this done quickly. And I know that these things just don't happen quickly.
Okay. Well, yeah, we'll work on, yeah, I think the workflow will help us all identify exact items, action items. And if we all have it, that'll be helpful. All right. Next item is work session goals and strategic planning ideas. And I don't, I'll let Ann lead on this also.
Sure. So this, this I put on here because I, there's been several different meetings about kind of a whole array of different goal setting and, and work that would have engagement with staff, the planning commission and the board. And, you know, the one, kind of the next step that I think we were focusing on outside of applications in the back country was a, a look at the comp plan and just our growth goals and making sure that the comp plan aligns with where we're at at this check-in point. I think this was also a bit of a discussion with, I think the, the city may be doing the same. So that was, I think, kind of on the planning commission's next step after we, or in, maybe even in conjunction with the back country. However, I, I do think that the board of county commissioners have also identified some goal setting and priorities of maybe upcoming, long range planning priorities and goals. And so I thought that this might be a good time to kind of share that out. The other thing that I will apologize, I was going to reach out to talk about setting another meeting outside of our regular meetings to have a work session. And so I didn't know if we could potentially set that now, or if not, then I am happy. I know we've got limited time. Some of our members have to leave at five o'clock this evening. So we can also, I could, I promise this time, get this sent out with a doodle poll of, of a work session to kind of address those. So as we only have about 20 minutes before some of our members have to leave this evening, I didn't know how far we wanted to dive into this discussion. Or if we just wanted to see if we could check calendars and maybe set a work session now together.
Yeah, I think obviously I want to give it proper time and maybe if we could do the doodle poll for a, a date, even whether it's in a regular scheduled meeting or a separate meeting, that makes sense to me. And then I know that we had, I know that the planning commission had a couple of things that we've been saving on the list of to-dos. And then I think the commissioners have a few things too that have probably come up over time. So if, if there's some way that everybody can kind of put those together with staff so that there's a little bit more of an organized conversation for that meeting as far as what's on the list and how we should then talk about each of them and prioritize them. Does that sound like it makes sense? Is that kind of the idea, I guess, too? Am I following correctly?
And I see that Commissioner Mudge has also suggested committees to address some items between the planning commission and board priorities. And also with a planning commission board in city. So what is the best way for staff to support addressing this? Is it after the meeting, sending out just a work session to kind of look at this? Or maybe that's the best way? And if so, I would just ask if we could kind of spend this last little bit of time discussing what days of the week are really days that don't work well. And so maybe when I suggest some dates, I have kind of a focus on maybe some ideas of, of when might work and just take out days that are really off the table, maybe certain days of the week.
Yeah, I would, yes, I like that. And about committees, like I love that idea. I think we probably want to have this meeting first to identify, get everybody on the same page as to what those priorities are. And then, you know, pick commission members and and whoever to be on the different committees that pertain to the appropriate action item. I think that seems to make sense if that sounds like it to everybody else. So we could kind of go through the list of priorities, make a plan on, on what everybody, so that everybody understands exactly what those priorities are and the outcomes or expected outcomes are, so that then the committees have some direction. We can form the committees at that same meeting. I, to help start that off, Ann, I would say that I'm, it's not necessarily a night of the week that matters to me so much. Thursdays are a little bit harder than other days, but I, I'm fairly, my, all of my days are busy, so I can just block off a, a night. It can even be a Sunday. So I'm available. So if you're going to want to go down the list and kind of ask everybody individually, then we can do that.
Okay, that sounds great. I, I'm just going to go by who's on my screen first. Abby, do you have any days that are just really hard for you to, if we send out calendar asks?
Tuesdays would be the one I would like to avoid.
Okay. Thank you, Abby. How about Bryce?
A Friday afternoon, please.
I agree. Okay. Oh, sorry. Jeff?
No, nothing to add. I mean, things just come and go with kids' schedules and school changes, so.
Okay. Sarah?
Well, I would say Wednesdays and Thursdays are typically pretty heavily, but that doesn't leave any other evening.
If we can, I don't know if the plan is to eventually meet in person. I that, that's why I say today is, I, I work down an eagle on, so. I don't know. I can do it remote on a Tuesday, but.
Okay, thank you. Lupe?
The only thing, the only thing that I wouldn't be able to move around is just Wednesday. So I'm still taking class at CMC. So I'm done at 4:00 PM on Wednesdays, but anything after Wednesday at 5:00 PM works. So any, any day of the week works.
Okay, great. Erin?
No Friday afternoon slash nights. I work seven days a week, so that's like my one little break. And then every week changes, so I just kind of second Heather in that, you know, if we get it on the schedule, I'll make it, I'll make it work.
Great. Thanks, Erin. How about Howard?
I can make about any time work.
Okay. And Kayla?
Same. I think if we just get it on the calendar, I'll be able to accommodate as best I can.
Sounds great. Is four o'clock by a thumbs up, is, is four o'clock? Or, or I can, you know, add in some other timeframes beyond four, different than four, but is four generally a time that is reasonable for everyone? I see thumbs up from Bryce.
Yeah.
From Abby, Heather. Great. Okay. Okay. Thank you, guys. That gives me at least a, a little bit of a place to start. It looks like we'll be doing Mondays at four. But, but I'll, I'll shoot out, I'll shoot out some different ideas. So, and we can just really focus just on sharing out some goals and, and setting some priorities and then dividing and conquering maybe.
There's that first and third Monday. I don't know if that.
I know.
Right.
Yeah, I was thinking, yeah, third Monday would be good, because then it'd be second, third, fourth Mondays.
We just have a weekly date. That's great.
Typically those are board hearing days, which is, but they, we've done that before and they didn't step on each other. But that's why we haven't actually had any planning commissions meetings on the first and the third Monday. But the board holds their meetings at one and they're usually over, but by that time, but that's a long workday for the board.
Any thoughts, board, on, on, you know, if that's a pretty, just a little too robust today?
I, I wouldn't have any objections to that. I don't think.
No, I mean, we got to have this conversation, so let's just do it.
Great.
If we're tired, we'll forget some of our ideas. It'll be easier.
So what about maybe then committing to either August 2nd or August 16th? Now, at four o'clock.
August 16th or, I'm sorry, what was the other one?
August 2nd. That'd be a week from today or three weeks from today.
I could do either, I just want to make sure that, and you feel like if we did the second, that that would give you enough time to like put together, that we could get together and put together that agenda as far as like the list of what, what the requested priorities are. I don't know if that is already all drafted up, so it doesn't matter and we could just pull it from last time. But I just want to give ample time, like if the commissioners have additional things they want to add to that list, just so that we can make an organized list.
I think that's a great point. So, well, I don't, how does everybody, just kind of going through everybody, August 16th? Sarah Mudge, would that be okay?
Yeah, I, I think that works. I was just typing in there. I thought the board would have kind of a work session with staff too beforehand to see what our priorities maybe were and what was going to include planning commission and/or wasn't necessary, you know, like 1041s? Do we need to do that through planning commission or prepare something and then everyone have like a 101 and how to apply it? And maybe that's to bring to the group for everybody, but I thought, I think we canceled or punted our work session, didn't we? Or did we already have that work session together with staff?
No, we haven't, haven't had one yet. And so Sarah, I had asked Ann and Paul to put together a list of things that they're currently working on. Put together a list of things that they're currently working on and think, and projects. That are getting pushed a little below the surface that need to be brought to the surface, some of those things to bring to the board so we can have that work session.
Okay.
Really great point. So to allow that to happen, maybe going then August 16th. Would make a lot more sense, because like Heather said, that'll give us time to have talked to the board. And to kind of revisit the list and just have a little more preparation time. So. How about August 16th then? Okay, thumbs up, thumbs up. Thumbs up from Bryce, thumbs up from Paul, Sarah, Jeff. All right, Abby, okay, woo hoo, August 16th at 4:00 PM.
Oh, that's amazing.
I know, that was, that was awesome. And with seven minutes to spare.
Thanks.
Sarah, do you want to have your work session with staff and the board on the 10th work session day?
Uh, yeah, we currently are punting handbook. I think rec master planning cost recovery or pieces and land use now. So we think we need to figure out. What of those we need to prioritize and get on the calendar.
See, everybody, the board's busy too.
But we're, we, I mean, I guess, yes, we're planning a work session that day. What we need to talk about first is. Yeah.
You may not have room for us then.
Or we should just have a marathon of a day. I mean, that's possible too. To, to everything.
Well, that's your decision.
Yeah.
Think about.
Have you seen this? Well, everything seems important. That's why it all gets bumped. I mean, let's just extend that and I'll, I mean, I'll, I'll try to keep as much of that day open as possible. So we can make that long, because yeah, things keep getting bumped, we kept a week.
Yeah.
I think, I think doing this before the, the larger group meeting will be pretty, pretty critical.
Yeah, we may just have to get another work session.
Yeah.
Um, to get those three items taken care of.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody.
Perfect. Well, anybody have anything else you want to talk about? Five more minutes.
Just, just one thing. What, what's the county commissioners' thoughts about? How long will it be before we can meet in person?
We're working to work with the city on a big space, Howard. And if you guys want, I suppose we could inquire with the court. But in order to accommodate most folks, you know, like even more than five or six of us. We gotta find a space bigger than the board of commissioner room, I think.
Okay.
So we're working on it. I think.
Sarah, I didn't mean to cut you off. Um, Howard, we're also trying to repurpose. The limited amount of space that we have in the courthouse for the staff that needs space. Um, so trying to vet those long-term solutions before we go fully back to in-person, so that it's not meeting at a different place. Every time we have a meeting.
Okay, thank you both.
Yeah, I miss, I miss seeing people, but I also like the flexibility this gives people, especially from far away, to be able to attend our meetings. I'm sure you guys have already thought of it, but just if there's a way we're gonna figure out hybrid or something. Obviously, this has just allowed a lot more participation. Or at least it does allow for a lot more participation, which I would hope for. So I don't know how we can look at that, but I'm sure you guys are already thinking about it. Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm go, I'll move that we adjourn for today.
Thanks, Abby.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Alright, hi.
Alright, thanks, everybody. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.